Good evening. My name is Teresa Sinemand. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Mountain Lakes, I would like to welcome our two declared candidates, Megan Lenninger and Arunie Dawn, and members of our community to the 2021 Mountain Lakes Board of Education Panel Discussion. I share the League's view that debates and forums are the lifeblood of democracy. League debates allow all voters, irrespective of political party or whom they may support, to voice questions important to the community and to listen to each candidate respond to the same questions side by side. Last year, the COVID pandemic prevented us from gathering in person for the Board of Ed debate, so we held it virtually. We are so pleased that this year we can bring the community together in person for this event. We had a very good session similar to tonight's session this morning at the Mountain Lakes Library. A recording of this evening's session will be available through our Facebook page and on YouTube for those who were unable to attend. Look for more information on our website, The mission of the League of Women Voters is to empower voters and defend democracy. The work of League members helps make democracy work. Every election season, Leagues across New Jersey and the country hold hundreds of debates and forums to help voters learn about the candidates on their ballot. Watching a candidate at a debate or forum is one of the best ways to prepare for casting your ballot. This year, our Mountain Lakes League was part of a three-League partnership that planned and executed debates and forums in and around our legislative district. These events included Morris County Commissioners Debate and debates and forums among candidates for the Chatham Board of Ed, Chatham Borough Council, Chatham Township Committee, Mount Olive Board of Ed, Mount Olive Town Council, Chester Board of Ed, Morris Town Council, and the Randolph Board of Ed. If you or your friends are interested, each of these forums was recorded and is available on YouTube. There were a few reasons that we could not hold, there were a few of them that we could not hold based on various reasons stated by candidates, but this year, we held an unprecedented number of candidate debates and forums in and around our district. We have learned a lot and will take those lessons with us into future election season. The League encourages active participation in government and respects its members' rights to their individual voices, but we always act as a nonpartisan political organization, never endorsing or opposing any candidate for public office or political party. In addition to the debates and forums I just listed, this year, our local League made other contributions to our community. At the peak of the pandemic, with so many questions looming, our Mountain Lakes League brought together a panel of experts to present COVID and the community, which focused on the latest information available on the virus and its treatment. We hosted the News Literacy Project, a fact-based national organization that fights misinformation in news outlets and works to teach news literacy to students and adults. We organized our annual civics education event, Borough Council Goes to Briar Cliff. We provided nonpartisan voter information and registration opportunities for students and adults. And we ended our year by hosting the first female governor of New Jersey, Kristi Todd Whitman, at the Mountain Lakes Club for conversation and reception. You can view all of these events on the Morris Town Area League's YouTube channel by going to their website. Today, we are pleased to host a panel discussion between two candidates for Board of Ed. But before I introduce our candidates, I'd like to take a moment to remind you about the three ways that you can vote. First, you can vote early and in person at a number of locations, including in Denville and Parsippany. The closest location to Mountain Lakes is the Denville Town Hall Community Room at One St. Mary's Place. Early voting for this general election will take place from Saturday, October 23rd, through Sunday, October 31st, with voting hours Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Second, you can vote by mail if you previously requested a mail-in ballot. It just needs to be postmarked by November 2nd and received by November 3rd. I'm sorry, received by November 8th. And third, you can vote at Mountain Lakes High School on Election Day, November 2nd. For more details, go to www.vote nj.gov. Panel discussions, also called forums, are used, as we are doing today, when there are less declared candidates on a ballot than seats to fill. Both debates and forums are helpful in discerning between candidates. Unlike in a more formal debate, some of the questions that have come from the community have been shared with the candidates ahead of time. Other questions will be asked that are new to the candidates. If you have a question, please write it on one of the index cards and hold it up, and Mary will collect them and we will review them and try to ask as many appropriate questions as time permits. One last item. On behalf of the League, please note that by participating in or viewing this event, you agree not to record, reproduce, transmit, or stream from the virtual or recorded event. Any media generated during this event shall be the sole property of the League. We also invite you to spend some time, for those who are here after the event, to greet the candidates and enjoy our membership table as we welcome new members and volunteers. There's also some information about the various events we've had over the past year that I just discussed. I would now like to welcome and thank our two declared candidates for Mountain Lakes Board of Ed. On behalf of the League and as a 20-year Mountain Lakes resident and parent, I would like to thank each of our participants. They are Megan Lenninger and Arunie Dawn. I have asked that they each offer a brief personal introduction, and we will decide among us who will speak first. After questions, each candidate will provide a brief closing statement, and the person who speaks first will then speak last. We have asked the candidates to limit their comments to about one to two minutes per question. Megan and Arunie, the floor is yours. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. I will go first this time. So, thank you, Teresa, and the League of Women Voters for organizing this panel discussion. Good evening, everyone. My name is Arunie Dawn. Some of you may already know me from my time serving on the Board of Education or through various interactions in the community. For those of you who don't know me, first and foremost, I am a mom of three young boys. They are currently in the district in grades 3, 5, and 9. My husband mentioned I moved to town in 2015 from Edison, New Jersey. We moved here from Edison when my youngest son was in preschool and he started at Lake Drive Ivy Hall preschool. So, I can say now that we've had exposure to all four schools within the district. In addition to being a mom, I work full-time for the pharmaceutical industry. I work in managed markets and I'm responsible for shaping the pre-launch commercialization strategy for new therapy. My work experience prior to that includes five-plus years in consulting for pharma and biotech industries. As for my educational background, it includes bachelor's degrees in biology and microbiology and a PhD in pharmacology from the University of Iowa. And if elected, what I would like to say is that I would bring to the Board of Ed my ability to solve problems and strategize. This district needs a clear direction of where we want to go and what kind of education we want to provide our kids. As a trained scientist, I'm naturally inquisitive, capable of asking critical questions, no matter what the topic is, and these qualities, in my opinion, would be very valuable to have on the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Arunie. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, the League of Women Voters, for hosting this event, and thank you all for taking the time out of your busy schedules to come and listen to the Board of Education's candidates speak. It means a great deal to me that you're so invested in our students and the community. My name is Megan Lonninger, and I currently am filling an interim role in the Board of Education. Since moving here in 2018, we've enjoyed everything there is to offer in Mountain Lakes, from the beautiful forests and lakes to the community events and the fantastic educational system. Actually, this is why we moved here, is because we're the excellent education that we hope our children will receive. But not just from Wildwood, Briar Cliff, or the high school, but from Lake Drive as well. My son, who has a twin, is deaf. We decided to move here because of the inclusion of the deaf children in mainstream classes, how supportive educators are of deaf children and deaf culture, and how being deaf is not seen as a disability, but a characteristic of a person because Mountain Lakes is inclusive, it's progressive, and it excels. We are very lucky to have such great schools. Not only will my children succeed, but all their hearing and non-hearing peers will as well. Mountain Lakes is known for the preparedness of their children, and I intend to keep it that way. It is my privilege to be part of this town, and I thank you for welcoming me to the community. It is my honor to serve on the Board of Ed for your children and the community.
Okay. For our first question, we'll start with Megan. What inspired you to run for the Mountain Lakes Board of Ed?
Over the last few years, there has been a lot of talk about the Lake Drive School. I thought there was a lot of miscommunication out there, and I think that we need to see how excellent education is in that school and how it is the only ASL spoken-English and verbal school in the state that we provide. I'm so thankful for this school and what it gives the deaf children all over the state of New Jersey. We also have amazing schools. The other three schools have just been phenomenal, and I would like to keep it that way. 20% of the revenue from Lake Drive in 2019 to 2020, according to our financials, went to the Mountain Lakes School District. And in order to keep our schools, I think, vibrant and excelling is to have the Lake Drive School part of our system. So, that was my inspiration.
Arunie, same question.
Thank you. The inspiration to serve students originated more than 25 years ago for me. I've always been inspired, interested in education, being the daughter of a university professor. I grew up having dinner table conversations about US public education system. When I was an undergraduate student at the University of Minnesota, I volunteered in the Minneapolis Public School District tutoring K-5 students in math and science. I also led leadership groups for kids with certain disabilities, such as ADHD, ADD. I have myself gone through the highest level of post-secondary education and therefore appreciate the value of education. After moving to Mountain Lakes in 2016 with my own kids, I got involved in the Wildwood Referendum Committee, and then I was asked to serve as an advisor to the Biotech Academy because of my scientific background. The opportunity to run for the Board of Education came in December of 2019 when a former board member stepped on before completing her term. I'm generally not someone who stands around complaining. I take action when there is a need. I feel that I have the right mindset and skill set to serve on the Board of Education. I don't think one necessarily needs to have a background in education or teaching to serve on the Board because each of us who volunteers brings a different, fresh perspective and expertise. It is critical to have the right mix of individuals on the Board, especially those of us who are able to make evidence-based decisions to govern and guide the district forward. Thank you.
Next question, we'll start with Arunie. What is your philosophy of public education?
Thank you for the question. So, my eldest son attended private school from kindergarten through third grade before we moved to Mountain Lakes. Despite spending close to $25,000 a year and making more donations for infrastructure projects, what my husband and I realize is that we can have just as high-quality education in a public school setting. So, we looked around towns like Millburn, Chatham, Madison, Mountain Lakes, and settled here because this district does offer outstanding programming comparable to private education. That's one of the main reasons many young families continue to move to this community because of the excellent public education. In contrast to private education that's funded primarily through tuition and donation, public education needs to provide its programming and other services within a set budget, and we are accountable to local taxpayers. Our district does not get much federal or state funding. It's a 3% state funding. Approximately 60% of the revenue comes from local taxes. We do generate about a third of total funds from tuition, Boonton, Lake Drive Biotech Program, but with decreasing enrollment and phasing out of the biotech, it is so critical for our district to pay close attention to the budget. So, we, as a small district, if we want to continue to offer the rigorous private school-like K-12 education, we need to be very strategic and stay focused. We need an effective strategy plan to manage the district in a fit, fully responsible way. Basically, have to figure out how to best live within our means. And so, with that, I firmly believe our students should have the opportunity to explore their interests and pursue passions in academic, athletics, and arts, and other extracurricular activities. It's really fun about finding that right balance of what works for this entire community, and that's what the public education should offer.
Thank you. Thank you, Arunie. My philosophy on education is that it is one of the most important pillars of our society. It upholds our democratic values. It is a great equalizer to the community and to the public at large. It provides universal access to free education. It unifies a diverse population. It prepares people for citizenship in a democracy. It prepares people to be economically self-sufficient, and it helps improve the social condition. That's what my greater philosophy is.
Megan, the next question will go to you, and this question comes from our current audience. "Over the past two years, we have seen the departure of way too many talented teachers. What ideas do you have to improve retention and improve morale among the staff and faculty?"
It's a great question. So, I do think that there needs to be... First of all, it's not the Board's role, I think, to provide incentives to teachers and staff. I think that they need to develop those ideas, and I think that we need to be advisors to what the superintendent and the administration believe would be the correct. And hopefully, we can do it within a fiscally responsible and budgetary-conscious manner. I think that there are other ways to go about incentivizing teachers. I think that we could try to project more of a positive stance and be more respectful amongst each other. I think that would help to create a positive and lively and dynamic working environment. And I hope that whatever the superintendent and the administration develop, that it is conscious of these things.
Same question. What ideas do you have to improve retention and improve morale among the staff and faculty?
Yes. I certainly think that we can do more as a district and a Board to improve morale. You know, it is about the culture and the working environment for the staff and the educators. It can't be a toxic environment. It has to be a positive environment where they feel appreciated and for what they're providing for our students. And so, that appreciation could come in various forms. You know, it could come through either salary, benefits, you know, other incentives. But I also think that we need to make sure that we provide them with professional development opportunities to continue to improve themselves so that they can continue to develop their skill sets. And that's something that is part of the district goals. You're right, the 2020 to 2022 goals is professional development. I think we are going in the right direction in that sense. At the last strategic planning meeting, we talked about how 75% of our teachers and administration have advanced degrees. For a district like ours, I think we can do better to ensure and hire, you know, talented individuals with more advanced degrees or more qualifications to be competitive with other such districts. So, those things, I think, overall, you know, working with the MLAA, the Board can negotiate ways to incentivize and retain talented educators.
Okay. The next question also comes from a current audience member, and Arunie will begin. "In recent years, the district has lost or seen a decline in three revenue streams. Biotech was cut, the itinerant program is flagging, and the nascent alumni network of 2018 has been quiet. What ideas do you have to either revive or replace these revenue streams?"
Yes, certainly. I think definitely the current budget, and the ways to generate revenue is something we've been talking about for several years. And to me, these need to be not small steps. There has to be big, bold ideas that we need to come up with as a district, and I think that this is exactly why the strategic plan and the long-term plan is essential. We need to have a clear-cut plan of how we're going to generate, you know, significant amount of revenue, and those, you know, to me, is a good part of this planning process that we've initiated, and we do need to pay attention to that.
Okay. Megan, what ideas do you have to either revive or replace these revenue streams?
I really feel that this is a multifaceted approach. For instance, the biotech, I think, you know, and these other larger programs, I do think that we need to be innovative in how we propose to replace them. I also think that the strategic plan would be the most helpful and more most community-based way to think about what our strategies could be. I do think that there needs to be a more holistic view of our district as a whole in terms of how to figure out how to generate the revenue in a most productive way. And hopefully...
Okay. Here's another question from our current audience. "What do you think the Board of Ed could have done better in the past?" It's a general question about what the Board of Ed could have done better in the past. Maybe one thing specifically, if you can think of it. I think Megan goes first.
I honestly think that it would have been very beneficial for everyone if there is a greater degree of transparency and open communication between the public and the Board. I feel like there are a lot of missed opportunities for clarity, and our agendas haven't been met because of miscommunication. I think that would be... I wish that the old Board would have been a little bit more communicative.
Okay. And Arunie, did you answer that question? What do you think the Board of Ed could have done better in the past?
Sure. I can speak to at least the last couple of years when I served on the Board. There are definitely several things that the Board could do better in terms of communication with the community and, you know, also demonstrating professionalism and respect in front of the community. Those of us who, having sat on the Board, it is a leadership role, and it's something that, you know, the students look to, the staff and the administration. So, in that role, professionalism and that is really important. And I think there's areas that the Board members could have done better where there are in public meetings, having dialogues. It's always acceptable to have dialogues and discussions, but it should be in a manner that we can respect each other. So, that's an area I think we need to work on.
Okay. The next question goes to Arunie first. "Do you believe that the COVID pandemic has had lingering negative impacts on our students in terms of their academic performance or emotional well-being? If so, what can the Board do in response?"
Yes. So, I believe the pandemic has had negative impact on students' academic performance and emotional well-being. I actually raised this concern during the summer of 2020 when we were talking about the reopening plan because I know how important it is for the district to be proactive and come up with ways to ensure that there's no significant impact or disparity among the different segments of the student population. And I think it's much more difficult when we're reactive. So, I think it's important that we do act proactively. As far as the impact of the COVID, there's a published report called "The Education in a Pandemic: The Disparate Impacts of COVID on Miracle Students." That this report outlines 11 different observations, and I won't go into the details of those observations, but definitely K through 12, there's various areas where it has impacted certain segments. Children with learning disabilities, remote learners, for instance. And so, we, as a district, when we're reevaluating based on strong assessments, I think the data will be available in November, mid-November, and we need to figure out exactly where the gaps are, where there's a need for remediation, and where there's a need to address the consequences of the pandemic.
I agree. I think that there has been a definite negative emotional and educational toll because of the COVID pandemic. However, I do feel that our Board has been, and the administration, has been proactive in terms of trying to... They have been giving assessments for children. They've been identifying children who haven't been keeping up with their peers. They've been providing in classroom help. They've provided after-school help. They've been providing... There's a Time to Sore program. They also have been offering mental health professionals. And I really think that they've been trying to keep up with maintaining that our students are maintaining the education that they should be. And my only concern is that we remain diligent and making sure that the children are still on track for where they need to be through these programs.
Okay. The next question goes to Megan first. "Are you familiar with New Jersey's requirement for civics education for middle school students that is becoming effective in 2022? Do you have an opinion about whether civics education needs to be improved in our schools? And if so, how?"
Yes. I think Governor Murphy just... He signed into law the civic education requirement. It's kind of... We've always had civics education in our current schools for decades. It's usually incorporated into the history curriculum. And it's generally acknowledged And it's generally acknowledge of the democratic process and appreciation of participation in it. And the hope is that with a significant civics education, that children will end up being well-rounded citizens and who are responsible. And perhaps that we, perhaps this becomes something that's more emphasized within our schools. But I definitely think that it is something that we should pursue.
Next is Aruni with the same question. Do you have an opinion about whether civics education needs to be improved in our schools? And if so, how?
Yes, so the bill that Governor Murphy signed, this is called Laura Wooton's Law, came about in honor of the longest poll worker in American history. She worked at Phillips in New Jersey for 79 years. So starting 2022 calendar year, districts are required to ensure that they provide middle school and high school students age-appropriate course study in civics to teach the values and principles of democracy and to make sure that students understand their role as citizens. This will, you know, I think supplement what we already do as part of the curriculum. I do think we need civics education in our schools based on some of the anecdotal conversations I've had with friends in town. You know, there is a need to educate our youth about the importance of civic skills, engagement in elections to practice their right to vote, and make sure that they have greater appreciation for the democratic process. It's important for me personally that I act as a role model through being involved in the local community. And I think civics education needs to improve in our school district.
The next question goes first to Aruni. The Code of Ethics for New Jersey School Board Members requires members to, quote, "refuse to surrender their independent judgment to special interest or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or the gain of friends," close quote. Do you believe that board members should be concerned that others may attempt to influence their decisions for partisan, political, or other improper purposes? If you experienced or witnessed this in our district, what would you do?
Thank you for the question. So I went through the ethics training when I served on the Board of Education when Charlene Peterson came and led the board through this training, which I believe is an annual requirement. I'd like to think of myself as an independent thinker because while I'm always willing to listen to the different perspectives, and I think it is important that we listen to different perspectives, I'm not someone who's easily swayed by extreme views or special interest groups. Ethics and following the law is very important to me. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't listen to community perspectives or different interest groups. However, individual board members can't and shouldn't promise anything or take any action outside of board meetings. So I think for me, I'm fully capable of not being, you know, moved into different interest groups or their agenda.
Same question about the ethic. Being concerned about influence from partisan, political, or other improper purposes? And if you experienced that or witnessed it, what would you do?
If I experienced it or if I have seen it, I don't think that influencing or bullying Board of Ed members or members of the public for personal, political, or partisan purposes should never be tolerated. If this is the case, it should be reported to the administration. The board currently has to attend an ethics seminar. And I do believe that the board needs to try to be truthful, respectful, and collaborative to produce our end results. But I do feel as a member of the board, we need to listen to the public. We need to listen to parents and students and teachers and understand their concerns. But it does not necessarily mean that you will be swayed necessarily one way or the other. I personally feel the best decision is when you step back, you take, you assess all of your knowledge, and you make an educated decision based on the evidence that you know. So I would hope that.
Okay, the next question will go to Megan first. In what specific ways can parents and other members of the community best contribute to the educational environment in our schools?
I currently think that our parents are an amazing asset to our school system. They are so involved, from sports to HSA to the arts programs. They are so involved. It's amazing. I really think that children feel like they are very, very much valued because the parents have such a great interest. I think that it's just amazing that the parents are so involved. One thing that I would like to bring up, though, is that I really wish that the Lake Drive parents could be as in, could be involved. Because of HIPAA rights, they are not allowed to talk to each other. Their communication is allowed to be released. So I feel like they might be missing out on some of the fun events that might be, that they can be involved with their children. But otherwise, I feel like as a board member, I feel like that, you know, I feel like that we do an amazing job as parents to know our, to let our children know that they're valued.
Sure, I agree. I think parents and community members of Mountain Lakes are very engaged. And they have plenty of opportunities to contribute to the educational environment in our schools through the HSA, path meetings, volunteering as class parents with extracurricular activities, boarding events, attending board meetings. There are so many different avenues to do so. It is right now more difficult because of the pandemic for volunteering, but I think overall there are creatively ways to get involved with the school district. I do know that, you know, having looked at Millberg School District, that they do have parents who are professionals and educated. They do come and give a lecture series or talks to students about career. There are ways that we can continue to build on what we already have and, you know, increase additional opportunities for parents to get involved if they do like to do so. I'm also part of the Mountain Lakes Professional Women's Organization, and we've had discussions about, in addition to the career day that's at the high school, that we consider additional, you know, events such as that for higher, you know, eighth graders perhaps, and even the younger students to engage more parents in allowing the students to explore career opportunities or understand what there's out there besides your traditional job. So I think there's so many different ways that we can continue to build that bridge between the community, parents, and the school district.
Okay, the next question will go to Aruni first and is from a current audience member. We have had a total of $2.5 million in shortfall in the last two budget cycles. That's this person's understanding. How would you help prevent this from continuing?
Yes, so we've had the budget deficit, you know, the $2.4 million that you're referring to was about $1.2 million on the revenue side and $1.2 million on the appropriations side. And this year and last year, we had conversations about that budget deficit. It is not an individual's decision on how to address the budget crisis of this district. This is going to be a bigger conversation that we need to have as part of the strategic long-term plan and how to generate revenues. And as I mentioned before, you know, we are phasing out biotech. We are, we have decreasing enrollment at Lake Drive. We have decreasing enrollment coming from Wooton. So small steps isn't going to fix the budget problem. I think we need to take big, bold actions. And whether, you know, it's the concept of the biotech, you know, if there's additional opportunities such as that, that would be things that we can consider to generate tuition. Our budget, 62%, as I said, it comes from tax levy. And we are a small district, so there's limited amount of tax money that we can be generating. So we need to identify ways to generate tuition. And those are discussions that I believe and I hope we will have as part of this strategic planning process as the community, as administration, and the board together.
I agree with what Aruni has said. I do believe that those strategic long-term plans would be the best way to decide on the major revenue systems that could possibly come through. I do think that we need to offer more support to Lake Drive because honestly, it is almost like a private institution within a public setting. These parents are choosing to send their children here. I think that we need to send out a positive message. We need to do some marketing to help. But again, it's not necessarily our position. There is the Finance Committee, and, you know, as a whole, we come up with these decisions together. I also think that, you know, there are creative ways that you can look at, you know, staff and different things that possibly that we could do in terms of revenues. I think there are lots of opportunities, but I don't necessarily think that it lands on one person individually to make those decisions, which is what it should be.
The next question goes to Megan first. There have been times when questions to the board have not been answered for weeks, if at all. How would you remedy this?
As a member of the public where that has happened, I did find it very frustrating. However, I do think that if the public perseveres, there, I think the Board of Ed needs to be more open and communicative and respectful to themselves and then also to the members of the public and families, parents. It would be, I do think it is our responsibility to acknowledge the public and our families and make sure that their voices are heard. I don't necessarily think that what was happened in the past was maybe the proper way to go about responding to people. So hopefully, we can be more proactive in the future.
Yes, certainly. From the time when I served on the board in 2020, I have seen improvements in communication and the board's response to questions from the committee. However, I do think there's so much more that we can do. You know, I was even wondering if it is possible to have communication lead, you know, just from the board. But there are topics that I felt that you can't honestly answer. The board members, either due to confidential reasons, there are certain questions that get brought up that you can't address right away. But even if you can't address it right away during the board meeting, I think it is the responsibility of the board to look into it and then reply back afterwards. It doesn't always happen. So I think there are definitely areas that, as a board, that we could do better. There's been times where it was discussed that certain members of the board couldn't individually respond to questions that had to come from, you know, certain committee chairs or the administration. So I think the public isn't always aware of those, you know, particular details and gets frustrated when their questions aren't answered.
Okay, we have another question from a current audience member. It has to do with the cost allocation for Wooton Township. With a proper tuition cost for Wooton Township, how much additional revenue do you think this would provide when the next 10-year agreement is negotiated? They're looking for an answer as to what revenue you think could be generated when the next 10-year agreement is negotiated. Do you have any thoughts about that? I think, I think, you, do you want to go first?
Sure, so I think this question is very specific. And I would honestly say that I would need to revisit the numbers. This is something that I don't think off the top of my head I could answer about, you know, especially the Wooton enrollments decreasing. You know, I'm not somebody who's able to share my thoughts without looking at the evidence. You know, I'm a scientist, as a trained scientist. So I do want to look at the data and give you a valid answer to that question. It is something that, of course, we will have to look at as part of the budget discussions. And I would agree with that.
Do you have any thoughts on Wooton Township and whether revenue could be generated when the next 10-year agreement is negotiated?
I think that the contract is coming up to be negotiated within the next couple of years. And I know that there is talk about discussing this, but I don't necessarily think that I, as sitting on the board, that I can discuss this in depth as it's something that we're talking about right now. So I politely rescind or abstain.
The next question will go to Megan. Do you believe the board should play a role with respect to equity and inclusion in the district? If so, how and do formal school policies and regulations play a part?
I do think that the board is a, is an advisory role. So the curriculum and the superintendent, they develop the curriculum, they develop the standards, and we come in and we, as a voice for the public and as a voice for the parents, we suggest if this seems in line with what the community has been telling us. So if, I honestly feel like if we, depending on what they propose, we can respond accordingly. But I do, I am always personally, always for inclusion and diversity. I feel like we always need a countering viewpoint on any subject. So if something in the curriculum comes up, then I'd be more than happy to address that.
So I do think it is the board's responsibility to ensure that all students in the district have a right to reach K through 12 education and each student fully realize education equity. The terms equity and inclusion might mean different things to different individuals, but there are a number of laws and state mandates to protect students to have an equitable education without being discriminated against for any reason, whether it's related to race, ethnicity, gender identity, social standing. So it is the board's responsibility to make sure that those laws and mandates are carried through policies. I know there is the LGBTQ mandate that was law in 2020. There's a new one called Diversity Inclusion Law. That's been beginning 2021, 2022 school year, where each school district shall incorporate instruction on diversity inclusion in an appropriate place in the curriculum of students in grades K through 12 as part of the district's implementation of the NJFLS. So this is something that the policy committee needs to look at to see whether our curriculum meets those criteria.
Okay, the next question will go to Aruni first. And it was asked by someone in our, as were some of these, in our session earlier this morning. Who develops the school curricula and do parents have input? That goes to Aruni first.
Sure, so the curriculum is developed by teachers. This is something that we discussed. I was on the Curriculum Committee, ATOC Committee in 2020, when we were looking at the Q-SAP audit. And I know that Dr. Bangia was involved in, you know, providing oversight. But she clearly communicated the actual writing of the curriculum is conducted by teachers and it's done to meet the NJFLS requirements and the standards. And input from the parents, I think this is something that the parents can communicate to the board and the district about, you know, whether there's a need for additional courses and such. But as far as actual writing of the curriculum, that would have to come from the teachers with guidance from the administration.
I agree with Aruni. It's the responsibility of the teachers and the superintendent and the administration to write the curriculum and hopefully that we can be the voice of the public in terms of influencing what the public deems to be essential. I do think that parents' voices definitely need to be heard and perhaps that there is a separate group to speak with the board so that way, you know, or session, the past session, so that way people's voices can be heard in terms of their concerns. Because I do feel like the public and the families, they need to be, they need to be involved. But yes, I do think that we are just mainly an advisory to what the curriculum is because there are state and federal standards. And hopefully, we can just enhance that.
Okay, the next question will go to Megan first. I received a question regarding critical race theory that was not in an independently approved format, but I will ask the question this way. Do you have any thoughts on whether our school's American history curriculum should be changed to better include or to exclude lessons surrounding race and racism?
As I am on the board currently, I politely need to abstain from this question. However, my personal thoughts are that diversity is a beautiful thing and we can learn so much from people who are not exactly like us. So, but that's my own personal beliefs.
Yes, so as I referred to earlier, there are certain laws, the Diversity Inclusion Law. The school district is responsible for implementing. We currently have a number of policies around this, and the board adopted a new policy in January 2021 that includes a comprehensive equity plan. And I think the NJFLS content areas provide students with necessary tools and skill sets to critically analyze the information and come up with their own conclusions about important issues related to diversity, inclusion, race. Our curriculum already includes lessons on racial equity, African-American history, Holocaust, anti-Semitic education, Homestead, genocide, inclusive diversity. These are all part of our curriculum currently. There's also diversity in literature infused into the language arts curriculum. So I know those are things that Dr. Bangia had mentioned previously. In my opinion, and this is just my personal opinion, the my personal opinion, the, the conversations around critical race theory, I mean, this is an academic body of legal scholarship, and, and this is often taught at the law school level to examine the intersection of race and US law. I know this is a very sensitive issue. There's so many conversations around, at school boards around the country on this topic. I have also been listening to the Fugly podcast series, and it's very eye-opening what happened in that very affluent Dallas suburb town when the words Cultural Competency Action Plan were raised last. I personally do believe parents and broader community members have a greater responsibility to make sure that our students understand the importance of diversity and inclusion. The demographics of even Lake has changed since I moved here, and we just need to be mindful of that and teach our children to respect each other, be kind to one another regardless of their differences. And, and, and I think we can do that within the school district and outside of it, but I don't think the critical race theory curriculum needs to be part of K through 12 students' education.
Okay. The next question will go to Aruni. How can we stop the AP race that leads some students to choose AP courses over classes that could help them develop their interests and talents prior to college?
Good question. You know, the, the top, the conversation around AP rat race, which, you know, has been ongoing for years. And, you know, I think this is a, a debate of whether, when you enter university levels, there are certain Ivy League schools and top-tier schools that require or look at how many AP classes a student has taken. You know, some of those require eight to 12 AP classes when they enter or to be eligible to enter to their schools. And so it's a dilemma, I think, you know, and we've had conversations within the district about whether to offer, offer AP courses in ninth grade, you know, and, and I'm wondering if the children who want to take AP courses, I do think it should be offered and available for students who want to and challenge themselves. But at the same time, we need to be mindful of the impact of stress, the social-emotional impact, and what if, you know, with the increasing rates of depression, anxiety in young population, it's a balance of not creating a competitive environment where everyone feels like they're, they must take those AP courses, but it should be an option for anyone who's willing to or interested in doing so. I think it's, it's a debate. I am not going to at this time take a side on it, but for me personally, it, it wouldn't hurt to have those options available for few individuals who want to take it, as long as there's support systems there to address any emotional, mental health issues that result, you know, due to this competitive stressful environment, which I know some of the people who moved out of Milburn left because of suicide rates in those, and we certainly don't want to go there with that, with our district.
Okay, Megan, do you have any comments on the AP race?
Yes. So I agree with Aruni. I feel like a lot of our students probably do have burnout from trying to complete so many AP courses. However, I, I, my personal viewpoint is that perhaps we need to step back and really view, instead of just trying to be, fill up all of the requirements of AP classes, really try to focus on what the students' actual interests are. My sister is a director of admissions at a highly competitive college, and from speaking with her, it's not necessarily all about grades. It is, there are so many other components that go into a successful, a successful college application. If you have a diverse high school where children have a greater understanding of divergent viewpoints is a huge, is a huge attractor for admissions. Our high school is great in the way that it offers a variety of opportunities for children, and really they can pinpoint their, their interests and develop them and excel in those interests. That, I think, is, I feel like college is getting more and more specialized, and in order to, I think right now they're, at least from our conversations are, they're, they're not necessarily looking for children who are just, okay, I'm just going to take all the AP classes. They're looking for children who are passionate. They're looking for children who are motivated in what they love. So I think that is something that maybe as a parent, we need to kind of stand back and let our children be their best selves.
Okay, we have another question from our current audience. I'm adjusting it just a bit, but it, it is the same, same question really. And it will go to Megan first. Do you think it would be appropriate, based on the ethical rules we were previously discussing and any other ethical rules you know about, do you think it would be appropriate for a Board of Ed member to request a letter of recommendation from the superintendent for the Board of Education's child, apparently maybe in connection with a college application?
Absolutely not. That's, I think that's unethical. I, I honestly feel that, I mean, my children are very young. I have two kindergartners and a second grader. So we are not really so adept with the college process at this moment, but I don't necessarily think that, I feel like that would be a, a personal favor, and I don't necessarily think that that is ethical.
Okay, Aruni?
I agree with Megan. You know, I'm just trying to look through the Code of Ethics for, from the New Jersey School Boards Association. You can't use your seat on the board to get personal, you know, preferences for your children or any relatives or for that reason. So I think this is definitely breaking the Code of Ethics. So short answer, no, you shouldn't.
Okay. This is a question that was raised by an audience member this morning, and it will go to Aruni first. Both of you make reference to the excellence of our schools, yet some believe that the ranking of our high school has been dropping consistently. Do you have suggestions for making our schools achieve greater excellence?
Yes. So I'm, I'm fully aware of the rankings of Mountain Lakes. This was one thing we watched before moving into Mountain Lakes. There are different ranking, you know, New Jersey Monthly, Vich magazine, there are so many different rankings, and I do think that they, they each use different criteria to evaluate the rankings. So we don't necessarily, I personally don't pay a lot of attention to rankings. It doesn't directly correlate to the excellence in education. The excellence in education comes from a lot more than just a ranking. I know that our town, you know, it's a affluent town with certain criteria like free, reduced lunch, those things are factored into calculating the rankings. So, so it doesn't necessarily benefit us in watching the rankings, but I do think if we are moving in the downward trend, then we do need to, you know, see what can we do to address it. And I think it's really about offering our students the highest level of education and the standards and well-balanced K through 12 education. And, and with that, we can address issues, you know, related to ranking. And I do think right now, Mountain Lakes is still ranked in the top 12 or 11 in, you know, the various rankings. And so it's not necessarily that where we are today.
I, I absolutely agree with Aruni. There are so many factors that come, that play into the rankings, and that I don't necessarily think that we should be completely dependent on what our town is ranked, as there are so many different variables and so many different types of ranking, ranking out there. I do think that if we do end up slipping the majority, we need to take an assessment of what the criteria is for these rankings and see what has been falling behind, and then take it step by step. But I honestly feel that we have really always been very highly ranked, and it has not really been, we've been very proud that we've always been very highly ranked.
Okay, the next question will go to Megan first, and it comes from a, a current audience member. What do you think, it goes back to the question of teachers and teacher retention. What do you think the driver is for all of the recent teacher turnover in the past few years?
Well, I think that there has been, so there has been, I think a lot of it comes to, we could have been a little bit more positive and a little bit more respectful of each other. I think that, you know, if, if things are negative, then things tend to snowball that way sometimes. So I'm hoping that if we maintain being positive, it will also help create a wonderful working environment, that that will help the turnover.
Aruni, what do you think the driver is for the recent teacher turnover?
There are a number of reasons that, that, that's resulting in this turnover. Obviously, you know, the working environment and culture, but there's also things that maybe perhaps the public isn't aware of, you know, as far as, you know, their performance and evaluations and, and things like that, that might lead for them to not either choose to stay or ask to let go. There might be reasons why, you know, they're not having the opportunities that they look for as far as professional development, you know, growth in their careers that could lead them to leave the district. But overall, I think stability in the district is important, having teachers, especially those who are highly qualified and talented. We want to retain those. I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea when teachers leave if they're not qualified. I mean, I, I think we, we do need to be, you know, it, it's, it's accepted, and we, there are, I believe 75% of the, the educators may, you know, it looks like have advanced degrees, but if we want to hire more qualified, it's not always a bad idea to let certain educators go. I'm not suggesting it, but there are tenured teachers that I do think may not be the right fit for the district or the most qualified in to teach that certain subject matter. So it's, it's not the role. I think the administration is responsible to evaluate their, the status and also figure out who we want to retain, and especially those who are highly qualified, we want to retain and attract new stu, new teachers who are, who could continue to provide the best education for our students. So I hope I answered that question.
Okay, we have come to, I think, what will be our last question, and Aruni will go first. What are, what do you think are our district's biggest challenges and biggest opportunities?
Yes. So I think definitely one of our biggest, biggest challenges, and as we talked about, is our budget. We, we do need to address this. Over the last few years, we've been discussing it. I, I do feel like the time to react to it is slow, so I speak to address some of these budget deficits. We, we do need to get ahead of it. I'm, I'm very happy that we started the conversation around long-range education planning. This is a critical piece to make sure that we get on the right track. And once we have a clear vision of where we want to go as a school district in the next five years, we can plan appropriately and address ways to, you know, generate revenue streams that would address that challenge. And I think we have plenty of opportunities to have these discussions. There's a meeting next Monday, and if you'd be, is welcome to join, to have those conversations on how we can address the budget. And I, and, and one more thing that I would add is that, as I mentioned before, these ideas do need to be big, bold ideas. I've seen small, you know, plans that really only make a small dent, and I don't think that's enough. We, we can't continue to operate in that manner.
Same question, Megan. Biggest, our district's biggest challenges and biggest opportunities?
Well, sometimes our biggest challenges can be our biggest opportunities. And I really think that one of them is with regarding the finances. I think that we have the opportunity to be very creative within the long-term strategy and planning and how we can try to resolve some of these issues. I also think that we need to maintain open and transparent communication between our students, parents, teachers, administration, and the Board of Education. One of our challenges to retain our excellent staff and our out-of-district students, how, you know, I think the long-term plan will hopefully help address that, and we can set goals publicly and make sure that we can keep tabs on the progress that we are making, so everyone is aware of what is happening. I also think that we just need to start being positive and acting like the great districts that we know that we are. We need to have a, one, I think that part of it is to have a upbeat and positive workplace where people want to be, where people want to be engaged, where they feel their voices are heard, and really have everyone participate.
Okay, and with that, we will have a brief closing, brief closing remark.
As a board member, I would like to make sure that the communities and students' needs are being met and that we help them achieve their best selves. We need to make sure that all our students' needs are met regardless if they are in special education or in the gifted program. It is important that we continue the incredible education that our students deserve. As a mother of three young children, I intend to be invested in this school system and community. I hope to maintain the quality education we have and move the district forward to maintain a tradition of excellence. Thank you so much for the League of Women Voters who hosted this event, and to Aruni for your thoughtful and poignant words, and for everything we came out today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you again to Teresa and the League of Women Voters for, for this panel discussion, and thank you to all for participating and asking great questions. I, I would just like, in closing remarks, to say that, you know, I am someone who gets involved and would like to take action. So this is what led me to serve on the Board of Education previously, and I think what I add is my ability to provide strategic guidance with this long-term plan, and I look forward to contributing in any way possible to serve on the board and serve this community. For me, I don't have any specific agendas, but I will help wherever possible. We moved to this town because of the great private school-like district, and I want to make sure that we continue to make sure that this school district is one of the best. And my vision really is, you know, I've, I've been serving students for over 25 years, been involved with students my entire life. I, I think this is my second passion if I wasn't in medicine. And I want to make sure that we provide our kids with primary and secondary education, a rigorous academic experience, as well as a well-rounded K through 12 education, and provide them with the right values and behaviors so that they can go on to do amazing things with their lives. If I made an impact on one child, I think I've done my job, and I want to, to know that that's the only reason that I am serving.
Thank you. So on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I just want to thank everyone who joined us this evening. We're kind of transitioning back to in-person events after doing a lot virtually, all of us, the last year, year and a half. And so we do appreciate you coming out. Thank you for your thoughtful questions. Thank you to the candidates for coming this morning to the library, answering lots of questions there, and then joining us again tonight and agreeing to have this recorded so that the people who couldn't join us can watch it. So that'll be available on YouTube, right, through our Facebook page. You can find it through our League of Women Voters Facebook page, or the League of Women Voters of Mountain Lakes website will get you.
I have it in various places.
Okay, so thank you, everyone.